Good evening. The February 15th, 2024 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Won't you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with a brief roll call. I'm Chair Melody Rail, and I note that Trustees Greg Mitchell, Dawn Rutan, Valerie Jennings, and Mark Hamill are all here. Trustee Cross had an engagement that took him away this evening, so he will not be here. And I believe that Trustee Smith Everett is running just a little bit late, so she'll be joining us here shortly. You know...
I'm here.
Oh, he is here.
Oh, you're here?
This is Lee. I dialed in.
The voice from above. And again, I'm looking at the ceiling. Why I do that, I don't know. Well, thank you, Trustee Cross.
You ain't getting rid of me.
Right? You know, earlier this week, I had planned to open this meeting with an acknowledgement of our wonderful Kansas City Chiefs. As many of you know, I am a diehard rabid Chiefs fan, so Sunday night for me was a really good night. And then we had yesterday. And I feel like I want to say something about that. Certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to all of the people who were affected by the horrific events that occurred yesterday at Union Station. There is an epidemic of gun violence in this country that we need to figure out how to solve. I don't have the answers. If I did, you know, I'd probably be someplace far more important than here. But it's something we should all be thinking about. Yesterday's events don't represent what Kansas City is about. We are the Midwest. We are a welcoming city where people come and often comment on how friendly and collegial we are. We will get past this, but I felt it important to just acknowledge that this is an ongoing issue throughout our society, that we should all be thinking about how we can begin to mitigate. So I wanted to say that because I have the opportunity to sit at this podium and say things like that. So thank you for indulging me. The next item on our agenda is awards and recognitions, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Judy Corb to introduce our student spotlight.
Thank you. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Ryland Marankovich. And so Ryland, if you would come to the podium. I had the opportunity to meet Ryland earlier this week. I think it was just this week, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was a few days ago.
Anyway, and he shared a little bit of his story, and so I think you'll enjoy hearing from him. So Ryland?
Yes. Hello. I hope you can hear me all okay. I've never had to stand in front of a microphone before. I'm a little nervous. Hi, I'm Ryland Marankovich, as she just said. I've been going here since the fall of 2021, and I'm a very active student in your theater department, just over there. If you've ever had the chance to pop by, I'm sure you've gotten the chance to see some of our amazing productions that we've put on. And just recently, or at least, I am a painter over there, and I paint, and I build all their sets, and I do all that really cool stuff. And we just had the Picasso at La Penagil was one that I got to paint and be in charge of all the paint stuff for. And we took a lot of that, as well as some of our other shows, to the festival that we attend every year, KCCTF. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But I won a national award there, and I'm getting the opportunity to go to Seattle, Washington, which is really exciting. I'm really stoked. And I also do a lot of paint and artwork around Kansas City. If you've ever gotten the chance to come by Musical Theater Heritage over in Crown Center, I do all the paint stuff there as well. And yeah, this school is really awesome, and I'm really glad and thankful for all the opportunities that I've gotten with the theater department here. And yeah. Do you have any questions for me?
I bet we do have some questions. First of all, thank you for standing at the podium. I would never know. It's the first time you stood in front of a microphone.
Thank you.
But you have great humility. I like the way you just kind of said, "Yeah, and I won this national award." So congratulations for that. Anybody have any questions for Ryan? Yes, Trustee Rutan.
Oh, it's Ryland, by the way.
Ryland, I am so sorry.
Ryland, thanks for being courageous and stepping up to the mic. We don't hear about theater very much, so you've piqued my curiosity. And I love that you're very creative and you're spreading your gift all over the metro area. What are your future plans?
As for immediate future, this summer, I'm going...
Tell me the summer, too.
So this summer, I am getting the wonderful opportunity to apprenticeship with the Santa Fei Opera in New Mexico. So that's going to take up four months of my life, where I'm going to be spending all day long painting and doing all this fun stuff with their opera. And aside from that, going forward, I hope to get into this studio in New York. It's called Cobalt Studio. And I'm hoping to go and learn for another, like, two years or so about everything I can about being a scenic artist. So that's the future for now.
Thank you. Exciting.
Mr. Trustee Mitchell. I just want to say congratulations and good luck, but I don't think you need my tidings because I think your passion will carry you forward.
Thank you so much.
So anyway, great to hear from you. Thanks for speaking to us tonight.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'm really excited for you. So my question is, how did you get into theater painting and building sets?
I would say I got into it in high school. It was definitely something that...I started the art club at my high school, and so I've always been really into the arts. But they didn't have anybody painting their sets as a student, so I was like, "Oh, opportunity." And so I kind of got into that. And then from there, I've just been finding everywhere that I can that I can get my hands on a paintbrush and paint all their wonderful things. And here, she left, but her name was Bethany Elliott, and she used to be one of the faculty over here. But she got me a lot further into painting here, and she was the one who kind of opened up my world into Kansas City. And she really helped mentor me along the way, so I'm really thankful for the faculty and the staff that have been here and theater, so.
Well, I'm glad that you chose us because it sounds like you have a wonderful future.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I have a question for you. Where did you go to high school and how did you end up at Johnson County Community College?
I went to high school at DeSoto, over in DeSoto. And I didn't really know where to go for college because being a scenic artist, you either are shoehorned into being a designer, and there's not a lot of, like, specific opportunities for schooling for scenic artists. So I decided I might as well get an associate's out of the way, so that's why I came here. But luckily enough, they had a pretty active theater department here, and so I just kind of came from there.
Well, that's awesome. And I'm going to echo Trustee Rutan. We don't hear from the theater department a lot, so thank you for coming and sharing your experience with us, and the best of luck. Not that I think you're going to need much luck. It sounds like you got it going on, so.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ryland.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have an award. Dr. McLeod is going to tell us about this. I think Kenna was not able to be with us, but...
Yes. Unfortunately, Kenna Zelmwalt from our Office of Veterans Affairs was not able to be here today. She contacted us earlier. She was ill today, so she was not able to actually kind of be here in person. But I did let her know that I was still going to honor her, as she and I had quite the extensive conversation when I called her and walked over to visit to talk about this. So Kenna has represented us for many years in our Veterans Affairs Office, and this year, she has the unique honor of having been nominated and elected to the National Association of Veterans Program Administrators Board of Directors as the Resolutions Chair, and she represents Region Six, which is the region in which Kansas exists under that group. The group is out of Washington, D.C. They act in advocacy of veterans programs in higher education and perform both letter-writing campaigns and congressional visits to work with folks in our Congress and legislatures to discuss issues of veterans' need and how the GI Bill is being currently translated and what pitfalls and issues veterans run into in the hope that they can move forward ideas and resolutions for legislative change to ease the burden on our veterans and to provide them with better and more substantive services. Kenna has been a part of this campus since before my time here, but has been instrumental in a number of things, including us receiving our PAVE designation as the only community college in the country to have a PAVE group which serves as peer mentorships and peer advocates for veterans in education. Is PAVE out of the University of Michigan. She has worked to build out our Veterans Affairs Office and has leveraged the opportunities for us to have onsite a Veterans Affairs Administrator who actually our students can be walked over to and be helped in navigating some of the issues that they run up against when they go to use their GI Bill here at Johnson County. So they have kind of a direct access to Veterans Affairs here on campus that allows them to get that work done. We provide space, but Kenna was instrumental in working with Veterans Affairs to bring us someone who could help our students based on the volume of veterans who come through Johnson County. And so this is a very prestigious opportunity for her. She's very humble about it and kind of laughed that I actually noticed it. And I said, "No, no, they sent me an official letter because it's a big deal, and they wanted me to know that you were representing us." And she went, "They sent you a letter?" I said, "Yes, they sent me a letter." And so I just wanted to acknowledge Kenna and the work that she has done over the years. She's getting close to the end of her tenure and will be retiring soon, but she is an irreplaceable part of what we do for veterans here at Johnson County. And I wanted to make sure as the board was able to recognize the great things that she has done in her time here and the great things she continues to do for our students.
Thank you, Dr. McLeod, and certainly we wish that Kenna could be here with us. Hopefully, she's feeling better. You know, I just want to observe briefly that when I attended college here, and I'm not even going to say when that was, but as a veteran, there really wasn't much in the way of veterans' programs. And the transition from military life to civilian life is difficult in many respects. And the way that this institution has grown its veteran affairs program and all of the veteran assistance that we offer is really to be applauded, and I know Kenna has been a huge part of that. And so always a cause close to my heart that we recognize our veterans. So thank you for that, Mickey. Any other comments? It's all yours.
Okay. Well, next, I would like to introduce Alisa Waldman, our Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Ed, and she is going to present our next award.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. So I would like to ask for your indulgence for a few minutes to share the award, but really the partnership and the meaning behind the award, which may be new to some of you. So Johnson County Community College, the Workforce Development and Continuing Education Branch, received an international award in lifelong learning from the Learning Resources Network. We call that LEARN. That's the acronym for Learning Resources Network. LEARN is the largest association of lifelong learning and continuing education in the world. The award was only one of 20 given at their annual conference, which was attended by over 800 professionals in lifelong learning from five different countries. The LEARN president boasted about the award, so I want to share his comments with you. He shared that the award is for innovation in the field of lifelong learning and serving communities. These awards recognize exceptional quality and involvement in lifelong learning, an absolutely critical component to individual and community quality of life and prosperity. He also added that with more than 100 award nominations every year, gaining an international award is an outstanding achievement. So why did we get this award, you might be wondering? It is for a program that we call the College of Trades. And the College of Trades is a partnership, which is really very unique. It's a partnership between the college, the Johnson County Adult Residential Center, the JCC Foundation, and N-Circle, which is a local nonprofit whose mission is connecting people to community opportunities to end the cycle of incarceration and stabilize families and futures. The program provides opportunities for individuals to develop occupational skills for in-demand industries so that they can gain employment post-incarceration. The College of Trades is a 12-week program that we offer here on campus. It includes 75 hours of essential skills training, as well as trade certifications in many different areas. So for example, welding, blueprint reading, serve safe automotive construction, technology, customer service, whatever we determine the need is in industry and specifically looking for businesses who are open to second chance employment, we will design that program to fit those needs. We see steady enrollment each semester from Johnson County Corrections. Usually about 40...we average 43 enrollments per cohort, three cohorts per year. Those who are interested in the program have to interview and be accepted, and then they are able to indicate their area of interest and the path that they want to pursue. So since 2019, we have had 556 enrollments in the program. The Better Tomorrow Fund was originated by the JCC Foundation. So Kate Allen worked closely with us on this and her team to offer scholarships specifically for the program. As you can imagine, folks coming out of incarceration do not have funds available for tuition. They don't have boots. They don't have tool belts. They don't have many of the things that they need. So we try to work very closely, and the foundation is very supportive. Additionally, one counselor at JCC who advises for credit classes has been designated to support the participants of the College of Trades. That's Alicia Bredehoff at the moment. She does a remarkable job with these students. And that allows for the students to understand their educational opportunities that lay ahead of them with a counselor who really understands where they are coming from, and often they will enter into our credit programs. So the impact of the partnership, as you can tell, is far-reaching and immediate to those who are enrolled. The goal is not only to employ folks and give them a skill to make a livable wage, but it also decreases the money spent on incarceration. On average, 82% of those who complete the College of Trades program are employed, and the recidivism rate for those who attend the College of Trades is almost 25% lower than those who do not attend a program like this. So our team at the college is very involved in delivering this program. However, I am particularly excited this evening because Lee Jost, who is the Executive Director of N-Circle, the nonprofit we partner with, would also like to share a few words with us. That partnership is critical to the success of this program, and we wanted to give him a chance to meet you.
I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about what we do, and Alisa did a great job telling you kind of technically what the program's about. I want to tell you two stories. One of the stories is a young man who completed Construction Management or Construction Basics, a class that we held about a year and a half ago. And at the completion of the class, he shared with me, and by the way, this ended up being a part of a news story, but he shared with me that his goal was to come back to Johnson County Community College and finish his degree in construction management. And then he was going to go back to his native tribal lands of the Crow India, Crow Indians, and he was going to work on a Bureau of Indian Affairs grant to build homes in his community. And he wanted to be one of the tribal leaders. Since that time, he's been back multiple times. He called me up just the beginning of this semester and asked me again if he could get his supportive mentors. We have some volunteers that come out and help him with reading and understanding of assignments because his native language is Crow. That's what he speaks. And so this gives us an opportunity to serve a gentleman who is going to return and make a difference in his home community. And if you don't know, I'm going to invite you on a field trip right now. Do we have time for that? Can we just leave and go right now? Because right now, 13 students just down the hall are taking welding. And thanks to Johnson County Community College Continuing Education, Johnson County Corrections, and the work that we have from the foundation to fund that, those 13 folks are getting an opportunity to experience welding. I will guarantee you, some of them are going to end the class and say, "I will never do that for a career. It's too hot and too messy, and I got burnt." But isn't that wonderful that they have that opportunity? All of us want that opportunity for people to grow, and they are getting that today here at the community college. I'm a Cavalier. I came to Johnson County Community College from Kansas City, Kansas, and I attended here, and I won't tell you when. But I will tell you that I am thrilled to be a part of a partnership. A large institution can seem somewhat inflexible at times, and yet Johnson County Community College, especially our Continuing Education Department, figured out how to flex in such a way to reach a non-traditional population. Our Community College Foundation figured out how to drive funding to that because our clients do not have sufficient funds to self-pay for programs like this. And then Johnson County Corrections figured out how to continue to support these clients while they are going through programs, and then you have a local nonprofit being the glue to hold it all together. So we're thrilled to be a part of this. The stories are real, and unfortunately, you guys will probably go far longer than our welding class will tonight. But I want you to know that you're making a difference, and thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
We'll see if there are any questions.
I don't have any questions for you. I'll invite the other trustees to weigh in, but I do want to say this. I've always believed that everybody deserves a second chance, and what a wonderful opportunity we've created for people who want to overcome the mistakes they've made in their lives and go on to become productive citizens. And kudos to you and N-Circle and Alisa and her team for bringing the community together to make that happen. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll invite comments or questions from the other trustees. Trustee Rutan.
Can you go over the groups that are part of the partnership? I have the College of Trades, N-Circle, JOCO Corrections, and...
So we have the College of Trades is the program, Johnson County Corrections, Johnson County Community College, Johnson County Community College Foundation, and N-Circle.
Okay.
Those are our key partners. We have other partners, like the digital literacy is offered through MoCan Goodwill. They help with just basic digital literacy. But there's a host of partners, but those are the four primary partners driving the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question. Is N-Circle Johnson County-based or...
We are.
Okay.
Yes. Well, our two offices are out in Olathe, so we're small, but we are located right here in Johnson County.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time. Does that conclude your piece there?
It does.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the open forum section of the meeting. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door 15 minutes prior to each regularly scheduled board meeting. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. It's my understanding there are no registered speakers for the open forum section of tonight's board agenda, and so with that, we'll move on. And next up is Student Senate. Anna Puna Gonzalez, we always look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you all are doing well. I just have a few updates from Student Senate. So we had our first meeting two Mondays ago, and we have moved to MTC 234, and we are still meeting Mondays, 1 to 2 p.m. We have currently 15 senators. We do have some prospective senators who are attending our meetings, and we are still recruiting so we can reach 20 senators, which is our capacity, and as well as we also have five senators on our executive board. JCC has also voted in a new club, which is the JCC Young Socialist Democrats of America. And then JCC Student Senate has also funded three clubs this semester so far. One is Luna. We funded $4,000 for a Hispanics Leadership Retreat. We have funded the International Club, $1,418 for their events this semester, as well as the Students Nurses Association for $735 for a run to raise money for kids with cancer. Another thing I would like to mention is JCC has...Student Senate has started planning our Service Week, and that will be in April. And hopefully, next meeting, I will have some more details for you guys.
Awesome. We look forward to hearing about that. Any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? Thank you so much, as always, for sharing your time with the board.
Thank you.
Next up is our college lobbyist, and I'll invite Mr. Dick Carter to the podium.
Thank you. Fresh in from Topeka and completing Week Six of the 2024 Legislative Session, the first turnaround deadline is coming upon us. Next Friday will be the first House of Origin deadline, so bills that started in the House need to be over in the Senate, and bills that started in the Senate need to make their way over to the House. Anything that doesn't make that mark is considered dead, although nothing ever dies in Topeka. And there's a number of ways to get around those issues if a bill doesn't make it across the aisle or across the rotunda, as we call it. But that's what's going on right now, quite a bit of work to get bills out of committee so that they can be on general orders. That's what we'll be doing primarily next week, is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, sort of those all-day, all-evening type sessions where the full bodies are working the bills that are before them. Not a lot this first go-around. Not a lot of bills are making their way to the list of general orders, and we'll talk about that because that's the next thing I want to talk about. We're still waiting on a veto override attempt. The legislature, in the first week and a half or so, passed a reformatted tax package that they passed last session that the governor vetoed. They were not able to override that veto last session. A little bit of a change to some of the rates and some of the pieces in the tax package, but essentially, it's a flat tax. It's 5.25%, and I won't go into the details and all the components that are in that overall conference committee report because the governor has a tax package that she put together that essentially, the price tags are very similar between the GOP leadership tax package and the administration's tax package. The differences are the increased standard deductions in the individual income tax rates in the governor's proposal and the flat tax piece for income tax for Kansas residents in the leadership's proposal. So that bill was passed, along with some other things that were contained in it related to taxes, and the governor had already indicated that she would veto it. She's not a fan of the flat tax. The vote was close in both the House and the Senate, but not veto-proof majorities. I think the veto override process starts in the House, and if the votes were there, we would have already had that override attempt. They're not there yet. They have until...they have 30 days from the date of the veto, and that would be February 25th. So they're scheduled to have first turnaround on Friday, February 23rd. If they do not find the votes to override that veto, the veto is sustained just by the 30-day rule. So that's kind of what we're waiting on. That dictates everything else that happens in the rest of the session. It dictates the temperature, the attitude, the length of the session. Leadership has been projecting, even before the session started, that because this is an election year, the plan is to get out of Topeka early and get back home and be campaigning. The Senate is running in new districts. The House has already run in their new districts that were established in 2022, but this will be the first time that senators are running in these new districts, and there's quite a bit of change. And so the goal is to get folks home and running for office as soon as possible. That all hinges on what the outcome of the veto override looks like. House Higher Ed...well, rather, higher education budgets have been making their way through the House and Senate Budget Committees. We're actually doing fairly well. The apprenticeship, or we like to call it the business and industry investment in apprenticeships, is currently funded at the full level in both the House and the Senate. And that was a first-time appropriation last year. That's about $14.3 million total for the two-year sector, of which... That's about $14.3 million total for the two-year sector, of which about 2.9 comes to our institution. We do have, in the governor's budget recommendations, $250,000 per college for cybersecurity. That's not a lot for an institution like Johnson County Community College. It's a big amount for some of the smaller institutions. It's not a formula-driven number, it's just an across-the-board 250 per institution. Currently working on inclusion of about $17.5 million for student success. That would be some transfer of dollars that are currently in the budget for navigators, for advising. Our share of that amount would be approximately $3.6 million. So we're in the process where the budget committees are reporting out to the full committees what the budget recommendations from their respective subcommittees look like, and we'll be going through that process later on in March as the legislature continues to debate what the budgets look like across the board. Last session, there were a number of tax packages that were vetoed by the governor, one of which was Senate Bill 8. That contains a piece that we've been watching very closely that we call the government competition piece. If there is a service that is offered by a public entity that is available privately, this provision would trigger certain provisions in the bill that would lead to that entity being able to, the private entity being able to apply for a property tax exemption. We call it the Genesis Bill. It generated out of the Health Club group out of Wichita, and this is the third or fourth year, I think, that we've been talking about that particular piece. I bring it up because the House Tax Committee reviewed a number of provisions in last year's Senate Bill 8. As they're crafting their new product to move forward, that particular conversation was held and was not included in the new version of Senate Bill 127. And so that's something that we don't necessarily have to at least look to in that version of the bill, should it continue to move forward. There's a couple of bills out there dealing with Kansas Promise Scholarship. That's something that students have taken advantage of across the state, and certainly is something that students benefit from at Johnson County Community College. There are two bills. One is in the Senate, one is in the House. The Senate version would expand the program to include Wichita Technical Institute. I don't think that that bill will probably get a hearing and probably will likely not move this session, but the one in the House, the version in the House, 2539, would incorporate or include non-residents. And so for border colleges like us, that's an important conversation to have. And if you talk to some of our folks in advising or in student admissions, that is a concern that they have when they're filling out that last-dollar scholarship available to them. There's a work commitment to live and stay in Kansas for two years following the completion of your two-year degree, or pending, if you were to go on to a four-year institution, that triggers a delay, but the work requirement still exists then, following any complete degree completion at a four-year institution. So there's some things to work out with that particular bill. It has had a hearing. I think it will, I think it will move forward. Not exactly certain. It hasn't moved out of committee yet, but they still have a few days in which to kick that bill out of committee. And then finally, as far as state issues are concerned, I included at the back of your report a copy of a legislative post audit that took place over the course of the summer on college athletics. Now, I hope you didn't study that in depth, because I'm not really prepared to answer a lot of detailed questions about it, but I would say that we are included in the audit, but we were not a focus of the audit, and that's a good thing. And when you look at the overall expenditures for community colleges and athletic programs, ours is fairly low, simply because of the economy of scale of the overall college budget. The piece to take away from that legislative post audit, usually those are called by the legislature and approved by the Legislative Post Audit Committee, when there's a concern for something that's going on in a particular program. Some are just annual, every-three-year-type audits that are required via statute. This one did not, this audit did not make any recommendations. Frequently, when a legislative post audit occurs, there will be recommendations either in a legislative format or in some form or fashion that are follow-through. This one did not have any audits. Let me finally finish with a piece on the federal level with regard to FAFSA and the new forms. It's been a debacle. It is, it is a nightmare, and I still don't think that there is a, I don't know if we're seeing light at the end of the tunnel or not. Federal officials are saying March is a timeframe that we could expect there to be some, some resolution to the issues that are occurring with the whole process. The reason I bring it up is twofold. The Kansas Promise Scholarship that students use, and pretty much any financial aid that students use, depend on what that Pell appropriation looks like. Without FAFSA being processed, we don't have that. It pushes back even further than, when you're talking about things like the Kansas Promise Scholarship, it pushes that process back because, again, the Kansas Promise Scholarship is the last-dollar scholarship, so after everything else has been exhausted, the state steps in with that scholarship. So it's, it is a concern. The longer we go, the further it pushes back, does it mean students won't be able to attend? It could, and I don't know what that process looks like once, we have to have some resolution. I know folks at the federal level are working on it, but it's, it's not a good situation or scenario right now. There will be a roundtable discussion that the college is participating in, coming up in the coming weeks at Cleveland College that Senator Marshall's office is coordinating. Those types of roundtables are occurring not only across Kansas but across the nation, but it's good that we have representation at that, at that particular venue. I think I would stop there, Madam Chair, and see if there's any questions about where we're going or what's going on.
Well, I have several things highlighted in the athletic programs report that I want to ask you about. Before we get to that, I'll open it up to questions from my fellow board members. Any questions? Trustee Smith Everton, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Sometimes real life gets in the way of...
Doesn't it, though?
Yes. I just wondered who is representing us for that roundtable?
At the FAFSA roundtable, I believe it's Crystal Williams.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Very informative, as always. Thank you so much, Dick, and safe travels back to Topeka.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our college council report, and Mr. Jason Arnett.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How about those chiefs?
All right.
College Council met on February 7th with trustee Ratan and Senator Ariana Shorter joining the council. Staff Council updated the group on its project exploring the viability of Viva Engage, which is a Microsoft product that the college already owns. A task force has been established in staff council to build a proposal that would include rules of the road and who owns what in that particular environment. Viva Engage is a sort of social media-style community project that you could get, where participants sign up for communities. It's not a listserv necessarily, but it is a place where people can crowdsource answers and ideas and share their experiences. So that's what we're looking into in staff council. There's a lot of stakeholder buy-in across campus, and staff council anticipates some test communities to be the part of the next step after that proposal, the proposal is composed. Excuse me. Academic Branch Council reported on their January meeting. There was discussion of taking nominations for officer elections that are coming up, and ABC is looking for feedback from their constituents on the topic of what happens when committees get dissolved. You know, what happens, where the concerns of those committees move to when they're dissolved, and how changes are documented. Some members of staff council attended that meeting to introduce the Viva Engage project as well to them. Counseling reported serving 3,036 students around, by February 7th in the year, which is up from 2,954 last year, so they're busier than ever. I tell you that every month, it's always true. And there is continuing having conversations about mandatory advising, caseload management, and walk-ins and appointments. College Council then discussed aligning the processes of the shared governance structures by reviewing the definition of shared governance that Dr. McLeod wrote in response to the HLC. The chairs of the councils will meet with him next week to find a way to summarize that definition, so the concept of shared governance is more easily understood. And then finally, our communications subcommittee is continuing to analyze the transcripts from the focus groups that we conducted with institutional planning and research in October. And then, if I might just take a minute, I wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank everyone who is participating now and has participated in the shared governance of the college over the last two and a half years. Everyone on these councils shifts their time during their regular workday to attend and participate in several meetings each month. They're an hour, hour and a half, two hours, or sometimes longer. Every participant is serious-minded and actively involved in discussions which call to mind the college's values of community engagement and integrity, as well as belonging. In particular, I want to shout out Caitlin Crumsick, who's the chair of staff council, and Dr. Barry Bailey, the chair of the academic branch council. As the three of us begin to work together to align the processes of the councils, we're guided by these values so that shared governance can function in as transparent a way as possible, in a way that's easily understood by the entire campus community. So that's my report this month.
Thank you for that, Jason. Any questions or comments from the board? I would just acknowledge certainly the appreciation for everybody who participates, and I think I'd throw in there, too, that through participation of more diverse people and more folks who want to get involved, we can really accomplish tremendous things. And I remember when I was in high school, my mother marched on the State House, and I'm like, "Mom, you're marching..." And what she said to me was, "You got to be part of the solution."
Exactly.
Or you don't have a right to gripe.
Exactly.
So I would encourage people to get involved. I think it's a great way to contribute to the organization and give your own self a sense of fulfillment as well. Thank you for all that you do and for the people you recognize as well, so...
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks for your comments tonight.
Thank you so much.
Next up with the Faculty Association, Andrea Vu.
Hello. Okay. Hello. My name is Andrea Vu, and I'm the president of the JCC Faculty Association. I was wanting to start tonight's remarks with a larger inquiry about the philosophy and role of community colleges. So I frequently, like, read through those trustee digests that we get that come through the president's office, and I'm often kind of struck by articles talking about just how important community colleges like ours are to the communities that they serve. So whether it's providing students a pathway to four-year schools, or connecting them to an associate's in a trade that enables them to jump right into the workforce, or providing them with critical skill builders in our continuing education programs, we are fundamentally here to serve the students. It's also, of course, great that we provide a trained workforce to our local employers and then have some broader community programming to serve the broader community. So we're transforming lives and strengthening communities, I think, and that's core to our mission. And thinking about the broader philosophy and primary goal of this college, we are predominantly focused on student retention and success, or are we predominantly focused on increasing enrollment? That was a question, not a statement. There have been several success stories of other institutions through those trustee digests where they put student retention and success first, and then the enrollment follows that. Students want to know that we care about them. They want to have that experience of feeling that people here care. Sometimes if we're overly focused on the numbers, we may actually be undermining the larger student success goal. So there are many examples of, around this campus of how this can play out, you know, even from classrooms to other sort of support services. It's really a question to me about quantity versus quality, or quality versus quantity, however you want to say that. For example, when I was in college, I worked in food service, so I'm going to kind of take it outside of the college space for a minute. Restaurants can also, can face these challenges and often face these challenges of cost and pricing. So they can focus on providing a quality product and thus generating, you know, lower quality product that they're buying from distributors, which then kind of generates a better meal experience, and then you're going to get more people that want to eat at your establishment. So you're going to get more passionate people who return regularly and tell their friends about it. Or they can, they can purchase a lower-quality food product to save money and run the risk that folks will not want to return due to a lack of satisfaction with their meal. While nonprofit organizations, like public educational institutions, are not private-sector organizations like the restaurants that I worked in during college, this idea still applies to the work that we do. When we support the retention and success of our students, they will want to be here, and they will want to return. They will continue to enroll, and they will tell their friends and coworkers about their positive experience. However, if we are only focused on the numbers, we actually might be undermining our mission as an organization. So, changing subjects, I want to speak briefly about a growing concern in higher education, compassion fatigue. Now, compassion fatigue is the cost of caring for others or for their emotional pain resulting from the desire to help relieve the suffering of others. It's known vocabulary in various sectors, and it's kind of more related, you know, it's coming back into higher education. So it's known as kind of secondary trauma in the sense that referencing the way other people's trauma can be taken in on the person that's trying to empathize. Well, this term has been around, I said this, why are you... So because we're dealing with students who often have been living traumas through the pandemic, or through their personal lives, or just larger societal issues, we encounter these issues on a day-to-day basis. And I don't just mean that, I mean all of us that deal with students. So we must remind ourselves and our colleagues to take care of our own mental health. Otherwise, we're going to run the risk of experiencing the problems of compassion fatigue, which are becoming numb to the feelings of others and a decline in sympathy and empathy for others. As one of my colleagues likes to say, we must give each other and ourselves a little bit of grace. Relatedly, I was reminded recently about Zinger Miller's Basic Principles for a Collaborative Workplace that used to be widely distributed here at this college. Those principles are, just as a reminder for some of us that weren't here at that time, but focus on the situation, issue, or behavior and not the person, maintain the self-confidence and self-esteem of others, maintain constructive relationships, take initiative to make things better, and lead by example. These principles are highly connected to kind of organizational culture, and it makes me kind of think, so my mom always says, like, get back to the basics. And so they're also similar, I had the opportunity, thanks to Dr. McLeod's support, of attending Valencia College's Peace and Justice Institute, and part of that curriculum was principles of how we treat each other. Now, there are 12, so I'm not going to read all of them, but you can Google it and read, and it's a similar idea, is, you know, thinking about active listening and how we're treating each other in conversation. But in the big picture, all organizations, including higher ed institutions, ought to be acutely aware of some of the decline of social norms in a post-pandemic world, and really start to get back to those basics of what it means to be a good colleague. Certainly, we're all passionate about student success, and we all want what's best for our students. The principles put forth by Miller and the Peace and Justice Institute can provide us a roadmap on how we can effectively communicate our views in a way that maintains a collaborative spirit. So to close, I kind of want to just give you some updates and highlights. This year's STEM poster symposium is going to be April 25th from 9:00 to 3:00 in the COLAB, and at the symposium, students present their research or other projects in a conference-style poster session. The projects are completed by individual students, small groups, or classes. In conjunction with a STEM course assignment, an honors project, an independent study, or a research project, these symposiums enable students to get a conference experience and develop confidence in their ability to communicate STEM information, collaborate with others, and hear feedback from experts in the field. Last spring, we gave out $6,500 in scholarships to the students in the poster presentations. Two students received $1,000 scholarships, and an additional nine received $500 scholarships. There were a total of 155 posters presented by 164 students. 16 sponsors helped donate money to support that program, and we had 70 faculty, staff, administrators, and a trustee judge the posters. So I believe trustee Ratan was one of our judges last time, and I will say, if they haven't reached out to you, you might be getting an email, because they love when the trustees come and help support the students and kind of help judge those competitions. I think it really is nice to put faces to some of these things for the students. So just as a heads up. So again, this will be April 25th from 9:00 to 3:00 in the COLAB, which is OCB 100. You can also, if you want, Google JCC STEM Poster Symposium, and there's a website. And then in the realm of faculty and student successes, I did want to point out, as some of you probably already know, but Heather Sights and her students are finalists for the Department of Energy's Algae Prize, and they call themselves the JCC Cholera Cavaliers. And so they're proposing to develop a novel strain of cholera... And so, they're proposing to develop a novel strain of cholera that is expressing plastic-degrading enzymes to improve water quality in ecosystems. As finalists for this amazing prize, they've received funding from the Department of Energy for their project, and so, a big congratulations to all of them, and I just kind of wanted to give you a big heads up because that's one of the fun things that happens here. So, I will end with that.
That was a lot.
It was. I'm sorry. I tried to...
Any questions or comments for Andrea?
I feel like I just went to a class.
I know, right? Trustee Smith-Evert, and then trustee Rutan.
That was it. I just feel like I just went to a class. It was great. Thank you.
Trustee Rutan.
Thank you for your comments, and I do think that it's worthy of a good conversation to talk about retention and success versus enrollment and get to a deeper level. And we did talk about it a little bit at College Council as well. And as far as compassion fatigue goes, I remember when I first started, we were talking about, we were just coming out of COVID, so to speak, and we were talking about how the instructors are the first line to see if a student is suffering or going through something. And so, just want to say I appreciate what the faculty does in sensing students' needs and being that first line of notification where parents might not even know. And definitely, I like your principles to avoid compassion fatigue, but thank you to the faculty that's out there doing this important work that's not necessarily written in the job description.
Right. Well, thank you for the recognition. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I would echo those comments as well, and one of the things that you said, I also agree that it doesn't do us any good to get a lot of people in the door if we're not serving their needs in a way that makes them successful, and you said that very well. I also, what resonated with me out of all the things you said was this notion that we all need to learn to show ourselves and one another a little grace. And it seems like we've lost some of that over the past few years, and, you know, kudos to you for highlighting that, and I think it's a worthy goal for each of us, so thank you very... And trustee Cross, I know you're still up there in the heavens. Want to make sure that you don't have any comments or questions for Andrea.
No, I just want to echo trustee Rutan's comments that our faculty are on the front line, serving our students, and students come first, but we thank faculty for helping us in that effort. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, Andrea, for your comments. As always, very well done.
Thank you.
I do have one more comment. You do get a free shirt if you judge the STEM contest, so...
Oh, well, there's that.
It's a really nice shirt.
Okay, next up is J-Cert and trustee Smith-Evert.
Thank you. So, I have a very brief report. J-Cert received $2,131,394 in sales tax in January, and distributed $711,000 to each of the three university functions. So, that was done with, what did she say? I'm sorry. She kind of wrote it a little funny, and she wanted us to know it was all done, made timely on January 31st, 2024. We will have another J-Cert meeting sometime in the first quarter, and I will let you know when I find out.
Okay. We'll be the first to know after you.
Yes. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the KACC report. Trustee Cross has informed me that he does not have a report this evening, so we'll move right on to the Foundation Report, and trustee Hamel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The full Board of Directors met on January 16th. They were provided with recommendations from the outside contractor, Make Philanthropy Work. The directors are given the opportunity to provide input through the open forum, and the executive committee has been working on a timeline and action steps that will take the input into consideration. Summer Sips' evening is set for November 9th. Event chairs have been named. Stephanie Meyer and Ashley Sherard will lead the committee this year. Nominations for Johnson County of the Year has been closed, and the selection committee is scheduled for February 29th. The Foundation is collaborating with the Theater Department to host a community event in April honoring the impact of the late Harvey S. Boddiker. More details coming soon. This event will take place of the original event that was scheduled for February 20th. JCC's Foundation Spring Scholarship Luncheon will be Tuesday, April 23rd at 11:30 at the Capitol Federal Conference Room at the Reneer Center. Please save that date as well. Co-chairs have been named for the Summer Sips Scholarship Event. Nancy Ingram and Mimi Eckhart will serve as the second honorary chairs, and the event will be held on June 20th. Grant applications for the Hall Family Foundation and Speak Up are being submitted for Midwest Trust Performing Arts, and last year, we are successful with being awarded from both organizations. This week, we are honoring our employee payroll donors and hope to promote the program to increase participation in the program. We hope to get employee participation rate up to 20% this year. And that completes my report.
Thank you. I'll give a brief shout-out to Summer Sips. I attended that last year for the inaugural event. Trustee Smith-Evert and trustee Rutan were there with me as well, and it's good to know that former trustee Nancy Ingram still has her hands in the mix here at the college as we anticipated she would. I would encourage any gals out there to attend. It was a wonderful event. The food was great. The company was great, so I'll just give a big plug for that. Any questions or comments for trustee Hamel? All righty. Next, we move to committee reports and recommendations, and the first report we have is from the Board Governance Committee, and that's trustee Greg Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board Governance Committee met at 8:00 AM on Friday, February 9th, 2004, in WCMT 111, which is this room. The information related to that meeting can be found on pages one and two of the Board Packet. Kaitlin Murphy presented and reviewed the 2024 Working Agenda, which can be found on page one, and I'm assuming you've all had an opportunity to review that. Out of that agenda comes a recommendation, so if I may, it is the recommendation of the Board Governance Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024 Board Governance Committee Working Agenda. And with that, I will move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024 Board Governance Committee Working Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Mitchell, seconded by trustee Rutan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And trustee Cross? Did not hear you.
You can assume my consent unless I say otherwise. Please, thank you.
Perfect. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. General Counsel Kelsey Nazar led the review of the Code of Conduct Policy, which is 114-01, the Code of Ethics Policy, which is 114-02, and the Resolution of Censure Policy, which is 114-03. The Board of Governance Committee did not propose any changes to these policies. Finally, Dr. Corb provided an update on planning of the March 2nd, 2024 retreat. Ken Burke has reached out, Ken Burke will reach out to each trustee to set up a phone conversation to help construct an effective agenda for the retreat. So, be on the lookout for that if you have not heard from him. And I think that would conclude my report.
Thank you, trustee Mitchell. Any comments or questions? All righty. Next on the agenda then is the Employee Engagement and Development Committee Report, and trustee Hamel.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. The Employee Engagement and Development Committee met on Wednesday, February 7th, right here in the boardroom. Information related to that meeting can be found on pages three and four of the Board Packet. We have two things that we discussed mainly. The first one, Dr. Corb presented and reviewed the 2024 Working Agenda, which can be found on page three, and I'm going to read the recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Employee Engagement Development Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024 Employee Engagement Development Committee Working Agenda, and I will move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hamel, seconded by trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. You may proceed.
All right, thank you. We also went over the monitoring, the compensation planning. Dr. Corb provided an update on the employee compensation plan and presented historical JCCC human resources practices and showed what happened after the first salary table and plan was adopted back in 2022 to increase the minimum starting pay to $15 an hour. Dr. Corb then presented the Culpeper Salary Analysis Report and explained the extremes and outliers that are being evaluated right now. Dr. Corb also provided an update on the Vice President Human Resource Search and said campus interviews and candidates will be completed this week when they, and I will say, I think since then, we have completed every single one of those at this point. Dr. Corb said the college will be continuing to utilize fine-line services as needed, but anticipating the decreasing level of the need moving forward. The next meeting for the Employee Engagement Development Committee is Wednesday, March 6th, right here in the boardroom. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you for your report. Any comments or questions for trustee Hamel? I have just a quick question, Dr. Corb, for you. Can you just briefly let us know where we are today, February 15th, with the Vice President of HR search?
Yes, so we have completed all of the on-campus interviews, and we are just continuing the process now. We are in the phase of checking references, and so, we're hoping to just be able to continue to move that process forward. We have all the feedback from everyone who provided feedback through the online system. So, we have all the feedback now, and we're checking references.
I'm going to ask you to go out on a limb here. Is there a possibility that we may be extending an offer by the end of this month?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's music to my ears.
Absolutely.
Amen on that.
Amen on that.
I had to think about, where are we in the middle of the month?
It's February 15th.
Tomorrow.
Definitely.
We do have that extra day of 29th.
That's right. That's right. All right. Thank you again, trustee Hamel, for your report.
Of course.
Next up is the Management and Finance Committee Report, and again, we're back with you, trustee Hamel.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. The Management and Finance Committee held their meeting here in the boardroom on Wednesday, February 7th. Information related to that meeting can be found on pages five through 10 of the Board Packet. The Management and Finance Committee received the following reports from staff. We had an auxiliary fund update from Ashanti Thompson, Executive Director of Auxiliary Services. He presented information on the Auxiliary Enterprise Fund. The review of the auxiliary service policy was given along with financial results from the past five years. There is an overview of the bookstore operations, dining services, and the Child Development Center. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President, Campus Service and Facility Planning, reviewed the status of the CDL Driving Range Project and progress on the GEB first-floor renovations, currently under construction on the campus. Management and Finance Committee has the following recommendations to present this evening, and we have four, so we know. Actually, Janelle Vogler, the Vice President and CFO, presented a procurement report this month, and we have four recommendations. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Vasquez Commercial Contracting for gym, restroom, and locker room renovations in the amount of $286,704, with an additional 10% contingency fund of $28,670 to allow for possible unforeseen costs, a total amount of $315,374. I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hamel, seconded by trustee Smith-Evert. Any discussion? Trustee Hamel.
Sure. I'd like to mention that I believe this was built in the '70s, the facility, right? And we've had no renovations since then, so, you know, and I remember using this back when I attended college, and I guess I won't mention when that was as well. But, yeah, I probably needed some even back then, so I think this is money well spent.
Yeah, so it's probably well overdue, I would guess. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Go ahead with your next recommendation.
Okay. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation for the college administration to approve the low bid from BCI Mechanical for HVAC improvements to the amount of $391,526, with an additional 10% contingency, $39,153, to allow for possible unforeseen costs, and Strangler Industries for HVAC improvements in the amount of $295,230, with an additional 10% contingency of $29,523, to allow for possible unforeseen costs, for a total amount of $755,432. I so move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Hamel, seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion?
Actually, thank you. I actually had a question on the last one, but I put my hand up too slow, and you are too fast, so...
I'm so sorry.
My question on this one is, this is general, all over campus, right? HVAC improvements all over campus.
Tom, is it two buildings?
Separate buildings are listed on the recommendation. Police Academy in the report, in the packet. Police Academy Welding Lab Building, ITC, Galileo Pavilion, and Reneer Center.
Thank you. I just skimmed right back over that. Thank you.
Yep, you're good.
My question about the bathrooms, I'm going to ask every time, Tom, are there any gender-neutral bathrooms for the locker room renovation that's going on at the gym?
There are two on the first floor of the gym. Single-stall restrooms.
Okay, thank you.
I have just a very brief question regarding the HVAC improvements. Are these improvements that are going to result in cost savings in terms of energy usage, or are they just improvements that are needed to get things up to snuff?
Well, I mean, I think ideally, yes, they will. These are just improvements that are part of our normal rotation plan. As things age out, we have an infrastructure replacement plan that lays out building by building the timeline to replace equipment, and yes, with the understanding that they would be more efficient than their predecessors.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Go ahead with your next recommendation.
It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid from Kansas City Audio Visual for a single purchase of $282,411.
Second.
Is that a motion?
I so move, yeah.
We have a motion by trustee Hamel, a second by trustee Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and I think you have one final recommendation.
Thank you. It is the recommendation of the Management and Finance Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to Advanced Technologies Consultants for a Festo CP Lab System Upgrade for $277,905. I so move.
Motion by trustee Hamel, second by trustee Cross. Any discussion? Trustee Smith-Evert.
I just want to be able to say something before trustee Hamel's report wraps up that has to do with the Herschiner Building, so I don't, it's not really a discussion for this, but since it's our last motion, I can do it now, or I can do it at the conclusion.
Now, Vice Chair, you're doing this to me on purpose because you know the last meeting, we did that, and then I forgot to take a vote, so...
Let's do the vote.
But I got you this time. Last time, it was my fault. Okay, I will remember that. I have a question with respect to the recommendation that's before us. I've tried really hard to understand what this Festo thing is. I know it has something to do with automatic engineering technology, and that's about all I can cipher out of this. What is it?
I'm going to differ to Dr. McLeod on this one.
Many of the pieces of equipment in our AET program are physical simulators, so this is actually a cybernetic simulator that connects across the two rooms so that they can learn how to program the control modules for these and then actually move the arms in such a way that we would be training someone to work on a mechanical system in a highly automated factory setting. So, these are not cybersecurity pieces, but cybernetic limbs that move based on the programming schematics of our AET students. So, they're learning to run very cutting-edge, high-tech machinery for work in factories such as, and this particular program is the one that will provide most of the primary folks for our Panasonic contract as well. So, we're looking at kind of the future of automated engineering.
So, think robotics?
Yes.
Gotcha. Gotcha. All right, thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to nothing. And vice chair Smith Everett, you had some comments that you wanted to make.
Yes, just because it came up in management about the Herschiner Childcare Center came up on your agenda, and I just want to acknowledge that Jean Herschiner, whose name is on that building and was instrumental in establishing that center, passed away this week, and she was 103 years old. And so I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge that publicly and thank her for incredible impact she had, and her name will live on that building for a long time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you for that. Trustee Hamel, you may proceed.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chair. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Next up on the agenda is the Student Success Committee Report, and trustee Jennings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Student Success Committee met at 8:30 AM on Friday, February 9th, in this room. Shelley Allen provided an overview, an update of the Pathways Project. Gurb Singh provided an update on the college's academic master plan and how it is integrated with the college's strategic plan, the facility's master plan, and the strategic enrollment plan. Dr. Serb also presented the 2025-26 academic year calendar. The proposed calendar was approved by the committee, and the complete details for this report can be found on pages 11 through 13 of your board packet. Amy Sellers provided renewal agreements with school districts for the early college career pathways, and Shelley Allen presented the agreement with the Regents of the University of Michigan for the PAVE program. It is the recommendation of the Student Success Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024 Student Success Committee working agenda.
And are you making that motion?
I am making that motion.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by trustee Jennings, seconded by trustee Ratan. Do we have any discussion about the recommendation to approve the working agenda? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. You may proceed. Does that wrap up your report?
That wraps up my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda are the president's recommendations for action, and first up is the Treasurer's Report. And trustee Hamel, I think we're back to you. You're the man of the hour.
Thank you so much. The board packet includes the Treasurer's Report for the month ending December 31st of 2023. Some of the noted items are, page one includes a general and post-secondary technical education funds, which are primary operation funds of the college. December was the sixth month of the college fiscal year. State operating grant payments of 12.8 million, and the ad valorem property tax distribution of 67.9 million were received during the month of January and will be reflected in the next report. Expenditures of the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and that concludes that. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended December 31st of 2023, subject to audit. I so move.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion from trustee Hamel, a second from vice chair Smith Everett. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Trustee Hamel, does that complete your report?
That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is the president's monthly report to the board, and Dr. Korb, you've now had an opportunity to be on board more than just a couple of days, which was the case, I think, I think at our last meeting, so we're looking forward to hearing your report.
Well, so our semester, spring semester, well underway. We passed our 20th-day census for credit classes earlier this week. Enrollment is up 4.7% in headcount and 4.6% in credit hours. And so we're continuing a steady upward trend, which is good. You will receive a full, a copy of the full report like you have in the past. You should get that tomorrow, so you'll be able to see the breakdown of all of those pieces, but good news in that upward trend. Continuing education enrollment is also strong, although you're aware that based on their continuous enrollment throughout the year, rather than semester by semester, it's a little harder to track sometimes. But enrollment on February 9th was 11,100 students, which is a 14% increase from one year ago on February 9th. But because there are several variables that go into that and can impact those numbers because it is in a continuous enrollment cycle, another way to look at that is that on February 9th, point in time, they had achieved 64% of their total enrollment goal for FY '24. So it's, it looks good, and it's always, you know, because some of their classes haven't started yet, some people haven't enrolled yet, some they've enrolled for, you know, in the future. It's a little bit hard to measure that, but this is a good indication of where we are for FY '24. On February 2nd, we held the annual strategic planning retreat, so approximately 116 employees attended. The leaders for each of the goals in the strategic plan gave an update on progress to date, and then met with their individual teams to either affirm or revise, like, action steps for each one of the goals. And participants were provided an opportunity to give feedback via a feedback survey. It was, it was a great day. It was informative and engaging. The food was amazing, and that was by our catering department. It was, it was excellent. And I, you know, I reflected on that day as I sat through and I listened to the presentations. And I know I haven't been here for much of the work that has been done on the strategic plan and the goals that we have right now, but it was impressive to see the positive results of what happens when there's collective effort across the campus to accomplish things with those strategic goals. And so it was a great day, and it was, I think it helped us to clarify action steps for the rest of this strategic plan, knowing that we have to set the table then to start again because this plan will end in about a year. I had also noted that JCCC had lost a longtime friend of the college with the passing of Jean Herschiner this week. Jean and her husband Walt supported the expansion of the Childcare Center with a significant donation in 2002, and subsequently, it was renamed the Herschiner Child Development Center. But they also supported other things that we have going on on campus as far as scholarships, culinary initiatives, special events, and museum programming. So a lot of different areas that they contributed to on campus, so. And as Chair Rayo mentioned, I had also noted that we are also saddened by the tragedies that took place at yesterday's Super Bowl parade. We extend our thoughts and our sympathy to all of those that were impacted, some of which were members of the JCCC community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Dr. Korb?
I will just say that from my observations and what I'm hearing, you have hit the ground running. We are asking a lot of you to come in and just immediately take the reins of so many things going on, and certainly, we are very appreciative for the time that you're devoting to that and the positive things that you're accomplishing already in such a short period of time, and so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next on my agenda is new business. I'm not aware of any new business unless someone makes me aware of new business. Old business, I'm also not aware of any old business that we need to take up. And so that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an opportunity for us to take up in a single motion several things of a fairly routine nature, and I will first begin by asking if there are any requests to remove any particular items from the consent agenda. Hearing none and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by vice chair Smith Everett. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Jennings. Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We do have an executive session. I know we're all excited to hear that. Well, some of us more than others, I suppose. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session, and I would propose that the executive session last for one hour. Is that kind of a consensus with you folks as well? So that would begin at, shall we begin at 6:30? 6:30 and end at 7:30 PM, at which time open session will resume at this same location. We'd like to invite the following people to attend the executive session with the board: Dr. Judy Korb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbishan Singh, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by trustee Smith Everett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by trustee Ratan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And trustee Cross, will you be joining us in executive session by Zoom? Thank you for that. And we will begin our executive session then at 6:30. Good evening. It's 7:30. We've returned from executive session. No action was taken, and we are going to need to extend our executive session, so at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for a second time for consultation with legal counsel regarding contract negotiations, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last 45 minutes and will begin at 7:35 and extend until 8:40.
No.
8:20, sorry.
Don't make us stay long.
7:35 to 8:20, at which time open session will resume at the same, at this same location. We'd like to invite, along with the members of the board, Dr. Judy Korb, Dr. Mickey McLeod, Rachel Leers, Dr. Gurbishan Singh, Janelle Vogler, Kelsey Nazar, and Greg Goheen to join this executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by vice chair Smith Everett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero, and at this time, we will go back into executive session at 7:35. Good evening. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by vice chair trustee Laura Smith Everett, seconded by trustee Greg Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.